I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, the ninth of September. And this is the 10th meeting in 2025. And I'm going to call the, call the meeting to order. And councillor Waterfield, do you want to please do the adoption of the agenda?
Certainly Chair, that the agenda for the regular committee of the whole meeting of September 9th, 2025 be adopted as presented.
And on to number three, I would ask that if anyone, pardon? Oh yeah. We'll vote, can I have a vote on that? All in favor? It's unanimous. And I would ask that if anyone has a pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest, now would be a good time to bring it up. And if you happen to forget and remember when the item comes up, that's a good time as well. There are no scheduled meetings under the Planning Act. We, on to the adoption of minutes, moved by Mayor Brown.
Turn your mic up.
I move that the minutes of the August 12th, 2025, Special Committee of the Whole Meeting and the August 12th, 2025, Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved.
Does anyone have any questions? And if not, all those in favor? That's unanimous. We have two delegations tonight. The first of which is Erica Heeson, the CEO and Chief Librarian for the Perth and District Union Public Library. Erica, would you come up, please? And bring the microphone very close, so everybody at home can hear you. And I just want to let you know that you have 10 minutes to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, I will, I will try to speak very closely into the microphone here. So thank you very much for having me tonight. I believe, is this the clicker here under all these? Okay. So we'll go ahead to the first slide there, thank you. So our Union Public Library serves Perth, Drummond, North Elmsley, and Tey Valley Townships, which has a combined permanent population of just over 20,000 people, or 10,000 households. And of course, that population increases during the summer months with our seasonal residents. Our library board is made up of one representative from each of our supporting councils and two volunteer reps from each community. And so here in Perth, of course, that's councillor Waterfield. And we have a representative here from the board today as well. So governed by the Ontario Public Libraries Act, the board ensures our library provides comprehensive and efficient public library service and responds to our unique community needs. Our trained frontline library staff are people focused, responding to those unique needs by developing, providing, and offering education and entertainment. We provide books, ebooks, audiobooks, DVDs, streaming films, and more to community members at home or in the library. We provide support for families and seniors by providing no and low cost programs, activities, and supports for children, teen, families, and seniors in the community. In 2024, we offered 537 programs and had over 5,400 attendees. When it comes to connection, we provide equitable, reliable access to broadband internet through our public computers, our wifi, and lending internet hotspots so our community can make personal and professional connections. When it comes to economic development, we assist our community members in upgrading their technology skills, applying for jobs online, or using our free study rooms to work from home or meet with clients. In 2024, we had over 1,200 meeting room bookings or over 2,600 hours of use. We also offer STEM and coding workshops to help children learn and help adults develop modern job skills. And just to add that STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And sometimes we throw art in there as well, so then it becomes STEAM. So our mission is to share knowledge, foster community, and enrich lives. The library supports municipal priorities by strengthening programs and events offered to our residents and visitors, particularly in offering programs for youth and seniors, and focused on early literacy, learning technology, and things that are of interest to our community members. The library is a place where our community gathers and where they can find the information that they need. We encourage and support the development of community by encouraging our community members to pitch a program where the community volunteer runs the program itself and the library provides the space and the marketing support. We support collaboration and municipal partnerships and deliver efficient and effective library service. By participating in the union library system, each of our member municipalities pay less than they would if they were to set up and run their own library system and also receives better services as a result. The library and services are appealing and support affordability for new and current residents. Many new cardholders report that they have just moved to the area and getting a new library card was one of their first stops when they moved into town. So partnership programs of note over the past year include a monthly speaker series that was co-hosted with Queer Connection Lanark called Lanark Speaks with support from the Perth and District Community Foundation. We hosted author events and writing workshops as part of the Lanark Lit Festival in partnership with Alma readers and writers. We hosted the Eco Literacy Workshops for Kids, which was in partnership with five other local public libraries, and the Rito Roundtable with funding from the Ontario Trillium Foundation and the TD Friends of the Environment Foundation. The library helps over 100 kids with our literacy programs each year and around 300 kids each year participate in our TD Summer Reading Club. Other well-attended programs of note include beating workshops with Chalid Bourgeois, ongoing class visits with local schools, Storytime, and Library After Dark, which is a fundraising concert that we host at the library. We had Jeremy Lyle last November and Schoolhouse during Stewart Park Festival in July. Thanks to donations from Film Club Fridays, our small boardroom has been updated with new cupboards, furnishings, and technology to be a fully hybrid meeting room. And we have also just recently successfully completed bargaining with our unionized staff members for a three-year term. Looking ahead, we're currently in the process of a community consultation and needs assessment to evaluate the library's future needs. We will also be updating our agility plan this fall. This plan sets out the library's mission, vision, desired outcomes, and priority action items, and is renewed every two years. So the purpose of the plan is to ensure the library continues to adapt in response to changing community needs while delivering exceptional programs and services and offering the best possible value for contributing municipalities and library users alike. A note on our building, the library building is 45 years old and we are working to ensure that it is maintained into the future. This fall, we'll be abating the tile on the second floor and replacing it with carpet tile. And thanks to community donations, particularly from the Friends of the Library, one of whom is also with us tonight, and Film Club Fridays, we are also planning to update our large upstairs meeting room and kitchenette next year, which hosts an array of community programs and gatherings. To the tune of about 360 hours last year. So this chart provides an overview of library expenses. The majority of our expenses are our staffing costs. The library provides excellent service with the library's friendly staff receiving high marks in recent surveys. Our library staff is unionized and our staffing costs are subject to negotiated cost of living, step, and benefit increases. So thanks to council support, we increased our library specialist for adult services role to full-time this year. And this has been wonderful. This role now truly has the time to properly manage their responsibilities, which is managing all outreach programs and collections for adults and seniors, as well as the library's volunteer core. Inflation, of course, has affected all items. We've also kept contributions to our capital reserve artificially low since 2021 and to our infrastructure reserve since 2017. And we've gradually begun to re-increase those contributions as of 2024. In order to continue to maintain our 45-year-old building, we need to continue to do appropriate maintenance and put funds aside for any significant expenses, such as the flooring plan for the fall, as laid out in the library's 10-year capital budget. So our staff or our services. Our community survey this past June asked, what do you value most about the library? And 50% of respondents said the staff. So there are some quotes out there, that's very small writing, so I will read that out. "I deeply value every aspect of the Perth Public Library. The staff could not be more helpful or friendly. The atmosphere is grand." "Our library is amazing. The staff are consistently professional and kind, and the programming and resources are always terrific. I am very grateful for the Perth Library." "Our little library is spectacular because the staff is welcoming, friendly, creative, on top of what patrons are looking for, and they make so much of what they are giving to work with. Love my library." So this chart provides an overview of the library's revenue. So the library's union system is very cost-effective. However, the funding provided by the three municipalities together does not cover the full cost of running the library. Our collections, which is our books primarily, programs, and technology expenses are currently covered by self-generated revenue, grants, and donations. Library services cost the individual taxpayer an average of $35 per person. And the average cardholder borrows 30 items per year. So that's about $565 saved over buying those items individually. And for those who are regular library cardholders, when you get your little checkout receipt, it tells you how much you've saved, and I think I'm in the thousands. I have small children who loves, who love picture books, so that's a little different. On average, our community members visit the library over 100,000 times to use computers, meeting rooms, and borrow over 160,000 books, ebooks, and mortgage here. The library is an essential community facility because it is a vibrant community hub that draws people together and inspires community connections. It's a place for all ages. Seniors, whose only personal contact in the day might be the library staff, parents and children visiting, reading, and picking out books together, and teens hanging out after school. If you're on a limited income, there is a significant value in access to technology and books. The library bridges the digital divide by providing internet access, lending laptops, hotspots, and more, and helps people learn how to use technology through their tutoring, through tutoring programs. Thank you very much for your time. And if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to take them now.
Councillor Burd.
Thank you Chair. Erica, thank you very much for a fantastic presentation. I mean, you've covered a lot there in a short time. I've got a question and I've got a comment. My question, with the influx of new Canadians coming into many communities, do you see a lot of new Canadians reaching out to the library to help them with literacy and, and job finding? Is there an increase in that?
Yes, very much so. And so we've partnered with the new Lanark Settlement Services and we're currently gathering interest for an English as a Second Language Conversation Group, which will be hosted at the library, once we sort of find out how many folks are interested and able to attend. We've also partnered a few times with Open Arms, which is a grassroots organization working with new Canadians. And so we've helped be a location for gathering clothing drives, for example, winter clothing for new Canadians who might not have that otherwise.
So I'm going to use that as a segue for my comment. My comment is, some would argue that libraries aren't needed as much as they used to be because of the internet and, and you know, everything that's at your fingertips, you know, on one of these. But, but you represent so much more than just information gathering. You've already demonstrated that with your presentation. And I think libraries are, are even more today, a more integral part of our community than they ever were before. So I congratulate you on everything you do and I support it 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councillor McCray.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, and I have to say that Erica, I, I just think the library in this community is one of a kind. I've lived in a lot of different communities and, you know, the involvement and engagement you have and the participation and the wide variety of array of services that you are providing is absolutely phenomenal. And the staff, they're just spot on, just a great service to this community. I remember though, at the last presentation you gave, there was talk about the Ontario Library Association, whose vision is to lead and inspire growth and innovation of libraries, community libraries and information services. And my question is, at one time, I believe there was to be a letter written to them asking them for support, the government, the provincial government for support. Did that ever come to fruition or what happened in regards to that?
There we go, sorry, I was like, this isn't echoing properly. Okay, so the Ontario Library Association and the Federation of Ontario Public Libraries regularly advocate with the province for an increase along with other supports for public libraries, but in particular, an increase to the Public Libraries Operating Grant. I believe, I, it would have been last year or the year before that Town Council had sent a resolution forward to the Minister of Tourism, Culture, and Sport. I think I've got the name wrong because they've changed it a couple of times, but the Culture Minister regarding that. And we have in the past as well done a delegation to AMO. And so far, we haven't necessarily seen movement on that, but I do believe that that resolution was sent forward to the minister.
Well, having said that, I think that's something we need to be looking at going forward when we attend these conventions because there's an awful, and there's going to be a larger segment of our population that are going to be utilizing the library. There are lots of families in Perth and the surrounding areas that cannot afford swimming lessons and signing up for hockey and other fee, recreational services for fees. And the library certainly plays a critical role in that area. And I really think that might be, you know, going forward, a delegation we consider. What kind of money are we at the present time getting from the province or are we getting any?
We receive 42,000 annually from the province, which is a significant portion of our budget when it comes to the grants that the library receives. That being said, it is exactly the same dollar amount that we have received since about 1997 or 98.
Yeah, that's my point. Thank you.
Councillor Burden.
Thank you through the Chair. I endorse what my colleagues have said here tonight, that the library is, the way I look at it, is as a community center in the truest and broadest sense of the word. And, but I do have a couple of questions, and pardon my ignorance on this. What is a hybrid meeting room?
Oh, basically, it just means that we can do what you do here, where you have a camera and a screen and you can have someone be present virtually as part of the meeting, as well as the people in the room.
Okay, thank you very much. And I didn't catch the note quick enough. The Film Club Friday donation that you get was going to flooring in the meeting room?
It was, actually went to upgrading the meeting technology in the common room, as well as replace the, the cupboards, which were all the original from when it was a staff room and built in 1981.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Madam Mayor.
Was about, you know, I come from an age when a library was books, that was it. And from a library board that said, you know, we'll spend money on books, but we're not spending any more money on staff. But the, the change in the interim has resulted in a really positive result. That's my question. It's a demonstrable fact that the library, compared to other places, is somewhat underfunded. Is there a particular need, like, let's say you got a surprise grant or something? Is there a particular need that you would like to spend it on?
Speaking of books, I would actually spend it on more books. Very frequently, after paying for our staffing costs, the, the next area of the budget that's larger beyond our capital needs are, is our collections budget. And it has been generally fairly static over the last 10 years or so with minor increases. So that has resulted in us simply buying less, less books. And that is still a huge portion of what people use. You know, we see folks borrowing over 160,000 books each year. That includes ebooks, of course. So, you know, when we talk about the things we access on our phone, we are lending those items too. We're lending ebooks. If you want to stream movies or TV shows, you can do that through your phone now through the library as well. But that all costs money. So that would certainly be one area. That and maybe a bigger library to match that population growth we're seeing in the next 10 years.
Yeah, that's the other thing, speaking of population growth, we've grown by 700 in the last couple of years. And once Perth more subdivisions like that start to develop, we're going to have a whole lot more usage.
Yes.
Councillor Waterfield.
Chair, a comment if I may through to, through you to Erica. First of all, I'm very thrilled to hear the comments of my fellow councillors with regards to the library. And I want to thank you, Erica, for an excellent presentation. I really enjoy working with you as a member of the board of our library. We are fortunate to have such passionate and talented staff that make our library a vital resource for our community. And I have the chance to interact with the staff on a very regular basis, and we are really, really lucky. So thank you very much for an excellent presentation, and thank you for your leadership for our library.
Thank you very much.
If there are no further questions, I will ask councillor Waterfield to read the motion.
Certainly Chair. As recommended by the Committee of the Whole, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth receive for information the presentation from Erica Heeson, CEO, Chief Librarian, Perth and District Union Public Library update as presented at the Committee of the Whole meeting on September the 9th, 2025.
I'll call a vote on that. All those in favor? It's unanimous. 6.2, Climate Network, Leonard, Neighborhood Climate Concierge. I would ask that Sue come to the podium or come to the mic. Sue, you have to bring the mic very close to you so everybody at home can hear. And I would remind you that you have 10 minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, thank you council. Thank you for this opportunity to bring, to bring this opportunity to you and to the citizens of Perth. I am Susan Brandom. I'm co-founder of Climate Network Lanark. And sorry, do I just tell you to advance the slides? Thank you. Okay. And we formed about five years ago now. We are a local nonprofit. We have now about 1,200, 1,300 followers in the area. Our key is to connect people together to take action on climate at the local level. Our goal is to cut greenhouse gas emissions in half by 2030. That's an ambitious goal. But people cannot afford to forget that we are in the midst of a climate crisis right now and that the first step to addressing that is to cutting our fossil fuel emissions. Next slide, please. So we have started a program to address home greenhouse gas emissions. In the county, and broadly speaking, in all of the lower tiers, the first source of greenhouse, the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions is transportation. The second is buildings. And so addressing buildings is critical on the agenda. Our program came out of knowledge over the last couple of decades that while there are programs that can provide financing, programs that can provide specific knowledge about the house, your own house, there is not much that helps the person make the right decisions about who to call, who, what the best contractors are, that sort of thing. And so we designed this program to address those gaps. So what we do is bring homeowners and tenants together on a six-month process. We meet for two hours each of those months and introduce the participants to an expert who guides them through, through specific things. And by the end of the program, then they're really knowledgeable and ready to move on and take action. We bring information on about a half a dozen funding programs, there's that many out there right now. And those funding programs address energy audits, heat pumps, insulation, solar, efforts to make your home more resilient to climate crises, forest fire, smoke, drought, heat waves, you name it. Next slide, please. smoke, drought, heat waves, you name it. Um, next slide, please. So these are just a couple of the quotes from people who have participated in our pilot project, uh, which we did now a couple of years ago, very satisfactorily. Uh, next slide, please. So these are the six sessions over the six months that we um introduced people to. Um, and you can see there that we have some really top-quality experts who who bring in uh very specific information. Uh, so for example, we bring in Bob Argue to address the issue of climate and greenhouse gases. Um, Andy Coburn uh is a critical part of our program. He is with NEMA, which is the Association of uh Insulation Manufacturers across North America. As many of you know him, uh, he's been an instructor at Algonquin College. He's very uh key to efforts locally here uh to advance all of these sorts of programs, and he loves our program. Um, we bring in experts on heat pumps who are installers and know about heat pumps. Um, we bring in uh people who are expert on solar, um, the uh root um retrofit rooftop so solar programming, net metering with uh hydro, that sort of thing. Next slide, please. We um, excuse me, um. There we go. Okay. Um, our current program, we are targeting four hundred homeowners over two years. Uh, we have funding from the Peter Gilligan Foundation, Lanark County's Better Homes Program. And as I've mentioned there, NEMA and the Building Decarbonization Alliance. To note, Peter Gilligan Foundation uh provided us a small amount of funding for our pilot project a couple of years ago, and they were so impressed uh that they they approached us and said they would like to um provide more funding. Next slide, please. So uh what we are looking to do is to this uh fall is to um uh in effect relaunch our program to uh develop more um of our clusters locally and to have people in Perth sign up for the Perth cluster. We've already done this last year. Uh, one cluster here in Perth, and um we have a a shortlist now of people who want to sign up for the next one. So Perthites have been uh quick to take advantage of this, which has been wonderful. Um, next slide, please. I just want to review um the funding support because I don't think people really understand. As I mentioned, there's about a half a dozen programs right now to help people with this, not one. And I come out of a long history of this sort of thing where there was only one program. Um, but there are programs that the names here are Energy Affordability, Canada Greener Homes, Home Renovation Savings Program. The list goes on. One of those programs is the new Better Homes Lanark program, but it is only one. Um, and there are programs there that will provide free heat pumps, free refrigerators, free freezers, free dehumidifiers to people who are eligible. And what's eligibility? So I happened to talk to one woman today, and she said, ah, I'm not eligible for any of that sort of thing. And let me just give you an idea. So one program in particular, the free one, right? Um, you can be eligible for that program if you happen to take advantage of any one of a long list of different programs or if your income for one person in a home is less than forty seven thousand and ninety dollars or for two people in a home is less than sixty six thousand, five hundred and ninety five dollars. I'm a senior. I would not hesitate to suggest that most seniors make less than that. Okay? Most low-income people, low income in Lanark County, make less than that. So these are programs that people should be jumping on and taking advantage of now. Um, and part of the whole thing is it goes to the issue of not being hostage to your utilities, right? The more you can uh curtail the amount of money you're spending on energy, the better off you are. And with all these programs there to help, it just makes complete sense for people to to do that. Next slide, please. What we are asking of Perth um is if you can help us spread the word, literally through your social media, through distributing our flyers, connecting us with residents, and if you see any opportunity for us to come and make a presentation about uh this program, about any of the funding things, then please just reach out to us, and we would love to be there. And next slide, please. So that I would just conclude that. The the only thing that I would say here, too, is that we have heavily evaluated our program, and we have had response from all of the participants. And one of the critical things that they say is that they come away feeling confident, more confident to be able to take on these retrofits because they're complicated these days. And the funding programs are complicated. And so when they come out of those that six months saying that they're now ready to address, to find the right uh suppliers, to find the right contractors, and to be able to uh talk to the contractors and negotiate with them, that's that's what we're about. That's what we're trying to achieve. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um, does anyone have any questions? Mayor Brown?
It's fantastic work that you're doing, and I liked your comment about seniors. I met a senior once when I was out campaigning. Uh, probably in her late eighties, she needed a new furnace. She had to take out a mortgage on her house to be able to buy the furnace. So, yeah, the more seniors find out that find out about this, the better. But that was shift gears a little. I was reading your comment on here about twenty-five percent of Canada's remaining wetlands are found in Ontario. So what mechanism is there to preserve those wetlands other than the regulations of the conservation authorities?
Hmm. Oh, boy. Okay, so you're not the only one who's asking about this tonight, and and that's that's just fine. Um, the reason that I brought it in part is because in in the course of of this program, we address the issue of um resiliency, right?
Yep.
And and we know in this area that frankly, wetlands are the critical to protecting us against fire, against drought, right, all those things. So anyway, that being said, um, some might wonder why and climate organization has taken on the wetlands issue. Well, it's because on the backside, you'll see there, wetlands actually sequester more carbon than forests do. That's the main reason we took this on. In the course of doing that, we have now become a leading organization on the wetlands issue. Okay, such is life. There's a lot of organizations in this area that are advocating the protection of wetlands. It's such a loaded question that you're asking, Mayor. Um, the province has retracted a lot of protections for wetlands.
Yes.
Um, and so part of what we have done in in doing this and then raising it at the county level is we have now managed to bring the county to the place where they are developing a natural heritage plan. This is an enormous achievement here. It really is. Other counties have have uh done that, but it has not been something that was so welcome here. Now it's underway. There's a big meeting coming up in October um to start that process. It's a multi-year process. Nobody's saying it isn't a big, big issue. But at the end of the day, ideally, what it will do is position us locally to be able to protect our wetlands for our purposes.
Councillor.
That's helpful when the province reduces the distance housing has to be away from wetlands by a hundred to thirty.
No, no, it's and I that's a longer discussion, of course. Um, but yeah. So hopefully, we can get to a point, but I'm, you know, it's it's just very sad that it will take time. So, anyway, sorry.
Councillor Waterfield.
Uh, through the chair to Sue. Sue, thank you very much for your very insightful presentation. Thank you to CNL for the phenomenal work the organization has done since its inception, and I just want to remind everyone of your principal goal, which is to half greenout, half greenhouse gases emissions countywide to help prevent catastrophic climate change. In your presentation, not only did you give an update, you 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 gave some general asks of us as a council. But beyond that, is there any specific action or actions that you would ask of us that we can help you in this in this goal and this mission, apart from the general requests that you've made?
Thank you for that question, truly. Um. We are in an incredible opportunity at this point with any new development. There is opportunity to say no to any new fossil fuel extension in any new development. That would be the right thing to do. By twenty thirty, we have to stop, stop expanding the infrastructure for fossil fuels. There is no reason at this point that any new development is not just on electric heat pumps, electric backup. Part of the issue that comes up is you have to have a backup heating system if you're going to have an electric heat pump, right? The backup heater is effectively what's called a toaster. It's an electric baseboard inside the plenum of the heat pump. It's that simple. So it can be done. It is being done. And there's no reason, frankly, that the Town of Perth can't be requiring that in all of its new developments. That would be critical, instrumental, fabulous.
Thank you.
Councillor Bird. Thank you through the chair. Um, thank you for the presentation um and for the other aspect of what you've left with us for further conversation. I just wanted to say that I appreciate that you started talking about resilience because that's one of the terms that we've started using in council, particularly in the last term. Um, as we deal with trying our asset management and all the rest, it's going to deal with uh mitigation as well. Um, and I also like the aspect of this is something that's going to have to be done collaboratively. I personally would like to see us moving further forward on um the issue of making our uh natural assets in the area, such as wetlands, um, part of our asset management plan and officially our assets, but uh that's a work in hand. But thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any more questions? See, no. Thank you very much for your presentation, Sue.
Thank you.
And Councillor Waterfield, would you read the motion, please? Sorry, that should be Mayor Brown.
Should be Mayor, I believe. Chair.
By the Committee of the Whole, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth received for information the presentation from Sue Brandem, Climate Network Lanark, Neighborhood Climate Concierge, as presented at the Committee of the Whole meeting on September the ninth, twenty twenty five.
Any questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's unanimous. And on to staff reports. Eight point one. Fire protection grant. Do you want to speak about this, Trevor?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I can be quick. We received this grant last year. It's a three-year grant the province is offering. This is year two, and they've doubled the funding available. Um, so how they're doing is they're dividing it by the amount of fire departments that apply. Um, and each station you have will get a set amount. So if all goes well, we'll get in sixteen thousand dollars roughly, uh, as long as we get our paperwork in time.
Good. Councilor McCray.
Thank you through you, Chair. Uh, to Trevor, um, my question is, we're going to be going into budgets, and this is part of a three-year plan. This is the second year we're into this. And um even with the funding that we are proposing to receive next year when we apply, if that funding is available, um, will we have enough of these uh protective bunker gear um or spare bunker gear outfits um to accommodate our volunteer fire uh force?
Uh, through the chair, because of this grant, we're in really good position. We've accelerated our timeline. Um, part of what we're doing is also sharing with our neighbors. Um, right now, we're at about, if we get this grant, we'll be at about seventy-five percent of spare sets for everyone, um, which really helps, um, because all those sets are certified. Um, if we get into a unique situation where we're completely depleted, we have the ability to to work with our neighbors and get those spare sets as needed.
Thank you.
Councillor Bird.
Thank you through the chair. I'm going to ask my usual two questions in relation to any ground necessity and um cost. This is necessary. This is equipment that has to be replaced. And as far as, am I right in thinking that? It's not. It's not a luxury item. It's equipment that is vital and needs to be replaced.
Yeah, through the chair, it is. It's vital equipment. What is what we're doing in this situation is we're expanding so that each firefighter has a second set. So if they have, use a set and they get theirs dirty, they now have the ability to put a clean set. They're back in service, and we aren't down firefighters.
Fantastic. And um this offsets that cost that we would have to have anyway.
Through the chair, absolutely.
Covering that entirely, but anything is who you receive is useful.
Yeah, through the chair. So our current capital plan is that every year we replace five sets, and this is allowing us to replace uh almost eleven sets in a year, which is great.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? See none. Councillor McCray, would you read the motion?
Certainly, as recommended by the Committee of the Whole, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth authorized the Director of Protective Services Fire Chief to submit a grant application to the Office of the Fire Marshal for year two of the Fire Protection Grant for the purchase of six sets of spare bunker gears as presented in Report Committee of the Whole, twenty twenty five, ten point one.
I'll call the question on that. All those in favor? Unanimous. Trevor, do you want to say anything about the animal control services?
Uh, leave it up to you if you have any questions.
Councillor Bold.
So through the chair, um, dogs is essentially what we look after. So if it's a dog that's found that we can't find the owner, it's brought to our pound services, which is located in Kempville. So we have a pound contract with Andrew Perron at Big Sky Ranch, and any dog that's found that we can't find their owner, that's where they go. Um, as far as cats or any of that, um, we can issue warnings or fines, but we don't relocate them. Uh, we used to have a contract with law as a trial contract where we brought cats. We don't have that anymore.
Certainly. A follow-up question.
Certainly.
Uh, is this?
Is this a non kill facility?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCray.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just a couple of comments. More and more rescues, I was just reading this in the Ottawa Valley News, more and more rescues are closing their doors. And adoptions are slowing, and the demand for rescue is rising. And there's not a lot of choice. I think we honestly, we were very lucky. I know that they were the only group that put in a bid for this. But we're very lucky to have the enforcement by Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement. My question is, reading the report, there are a number of other municipalities that are using this service. Do they have the capacity? Will they have the capacity for the need that we may may have?
Through the chair, I would say so. They currently have seven staff members and admin, and they're actually looking to hire another part time. How the calls work, since I've been getting them the last month and a half, is you get a lot of them. But a lot of them are, here's the resource you need to contact. Maybe five to six calls a month, or their actual response is needed. And it's rarely that there's actually response and needed immediately. They have one staff member that's on twenty four hours a day, and then they can bring in other staff if needed.
And feedback that you heard from other municipalities was very positive?
Through the chair, very high. Very positive.
Counselor Waterfield.
Through the chair to Trevor. I read the report, and I just want to make the comment that I'm very pleased that we have what appears to be a very qualified vendor, but notably at a considerably less cost than in previous years. So I was very, very pleased to see that. And I think the the different billing makes a big difference.
Up note, I think what you'll find is the pricing will end up being the same. The price previously was all in. So whether you had ten calls or thirty, it was mileage you paid for. With this one, your base price is less, so those minor calls where you're rerouting a lot of the stuff is covered in that small base call. But if you get a call out, it's going to cost a little bit more than previously because you only were paying mileage before. So based on the numbers we looked at, it's going to be quite similar. We're hoping a little less, but we won't see until the end of the year.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any further questions? No. Counselor McCray, would you read the motion?
Moved by myself, as recommended by the Committee of the Whole, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth, number one, award request for proposal number P S two thousand and twenty five dash zero two, Animal Control Services to Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement for the delivery of animal control services. Number two, pass a bylaw, number five fifty two X X, being a bylaw to appoint Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement as bylaw enforcement officers to enforce the town's animal control by law and to authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute an agreement with Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement for Animal Control Services. Number three, repeal bylaw four nine nine three, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign an agreement with Laura Lawson for the delivery of animal control services. And number four, repeal bylaw four nine nine four, being a bylaw to appoint Laura Lawson as a municipal bylaw enforcement officer to enforce the animal control by law as presented in the Report, two thousand and twenty five, Committee of the Whole, ten dash two.
Any comments, questions? Mayor Brown.
So when is this company taking over?
Through the chair, as soon as council passes it.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to, whatever, have somebody come and catch a stray dog, they would phone you or the fire station and get the number?
Through the chair, that's what's been happening in the in the last month and a half.
I'll call the question. All those in favor? Unanimous? Trevor, do you want to address this?
Sure, I'll be quick and then leave the questions. Essentially, with the cost of everything, gone are the days that, hey, I just want a fire truck because it's shiny and I want it. You have to be a lot more creative now, and you also have to understand the guidelines that are out there. The biggest one is your fire underwriter survey. So as much as people think that, you know, there's standards out there like NFPA standards that dictate when you need to replace things, it's all based on insurance. So our fire department is rated based on fire underwriter survey. We're rated based on size of our municipality, location of our fire station. Do we have a full time firefighter as a volunteer? Do we have water, pressurized water? Many factors. What is your training? Are you actually trained NFPA standards? Now that is adopted by the province, so we don't have a choice on that one. And essentially, you get a rating between one and ten. You have to be really, really good to be up in that one, two area. You have to be a full time fire department, something like Ottawa, Toronto, and have special accreditation. We've fallen the five, six rating, which is really, really good for volunteer fire department because we have pressurized water, because we have a decent location for a fire station. We're protected in these areas, and we've always had a good training program. What also falls into that equation is your apparatus. So NFPA has standards on when you are to replace your apparatus. That being said, there's wiggle room to it. It's not a hard, you need this at this date, right? You essentially assess the vehicle. You have wiggle room. A frontline pumper should be fifteen years for a community of our size. If we were a bigger community, it'd be ten years. We don't take that pumper out of service. We put it into reserve. And we extend that to a life of twenty years. So NFPA says we can go to twenty years. However, if you do specific testing, you can extend that unit to twenty five years and still get ratings. Can the unit work after twenty five years? Possibly. And that's where you need to look at each case individually. How is a pump been used? How is it running? And how is it serving your municipality? So each truck has a different standard, and each truck needs to be treated differently. And what we're finding now, instead of the trend of we need a custom built truck to work for Perth, no, we need to find the most economical and useful truck that will serve our citizens and also keep our firefighters safe. So is it stock trucks? Is it used trucks even? We need to be very creative, and we need to look down the line. And what we've done in this situation, if you've brought in a consultant, a third party to view, to look at our apparatus and say, how are you doing? How are things going? And we're doing really well. And the recommendation is to extend our trucks out to the longest possible. And one of the biggest ones is taking our aerial and pushing it up to thirty years, which is a long time for a truck, but at the price tag of it, we're going to get every second of it because right now it's testing very well. What we saw with the truck that we have replaced is at the twenty year mark, things started falling apart. We're spending ten to fifteen thousand a year, and it currently needs a bunch of work, and it's still sitting. We're actually trying to sell it right now. So if anybody wants to buy it, it's still for sale. That's essentially the intent of this is to have that as much knowledge as possible. So as we're going down the road, we take each apparatus case by case, but we have something as a target, say, within this timeframe, we're going to look to replace this vehicle, because the last thing we want is the resident's insurance to go through the roof, because we just lost a rating in our fire underwriter survey insurance grading.
That's great.
Thank you through your chair. Thank you, Trevor. Can you talk a little bit about the replacement of equipment that the equipment van for two thousand and twenty eight? There's a cost to fix to that between two and three hundred thousand. Can you talk to the need of that? And in reading, I got this feeling because of the insurance and because of the recommendations made by the consultants that there's a protocol change when it comes to ensuring the safety of our firefighters and making sure that we are covered liably liability wise. Can you talk to that?
Sure, through the chair. This one's a little different because the equipment van technically doesn't hit a standard, like it doesn't hit the N F P standards. You could keep it for fifty years. It won't affect your insurance rating. This Health and Safety Act may look differently than that. With this one, what's happened is most of our trucks that size in our asset management plan, say fifteen years to replace it. So this one hit the fifteen year one. What's unique about this one and why they've said you could probably push it out a bit is that it's still functioning fine. It's testing very well. However, since we've changed our response tactics, the original use of the equipment van was all the firefighter's gear was in the apparatus. This van was a two seater that was just, it's like a bread truck. It brings the equipment to the scene. The firefighters go to the scene. They put their stuff on, they fight the fire. Now we respond to the fire hall after the fire master plan and risk assessment assessment. Now we come into the fire hall, we get dressed, and then we respond fully equipped to help protect our firefighters. We have a two seater equipment van that stores stuff very well, but can't move the people. So it's a bit of a unique one that we're still looking at all options, and there was a bunch of different recommendations in the in the review on what we could do moving forward.
Just just in conclusion, I think it's really important to stress that as part of this research project that was done, or this master plan that was done by Lomax Group, they impressed the community risk assessment. And the top five is industrial fire explosion, severe weather events, which in a lot of cases, we're seeing fires. Fire in residential areas, fire in downtown area, and railway emergencies. So you see how important it is that we keep updated and current and our and the best possible equipment that we possibly can for our fire, our volunteer fire department. With those types of, those are identified as the top five risk assessments for their community.
Counselor Waterfield.
Through the chair to Trevor. Trevor, an extremely informative and and detailed report. I read through it twice. You you talked about the purchase of a rapid response vehicle in two thousand and twenty six. And I looked back through the report, and I couldn't remember seeing the anticipated cost.
Through the chair, so that that's at the end of the report, but it is in the two hundred to three hundred thousand range, depending on what you put on it or what you can get for stock versus demo type thing.
So it's important, since we are just on the verge of budget for next year, that we keep that into account. That number two to three hundred thousand for a vehicle, plus we're having a brand new garage, so.
Yeah.
Important to keep in mind for budget. Thank you very much, Trevor.
Deputy Mayor.
Trevor, the new proposed truck, how many firefighters can you put in it? Can you can you adjust it depending on your needs?
Yeah, for this one, it'd be four to five. Yeah, and part of the idea of it is that as we're expanding, we're going to meet and be able to try to run this unit a little more, especially with the new subdivision possibly coming in. You're running the smaller truck versus a bigger truck, which will then extend the life of the rest of our fleet. And us would be a little better in our in our environment.
No further questions? Counselor McCray, would you like to read the motion?
As recommended by the Committee of the Whole, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth passed bylaw number five thousand dash one, being a bylaw to adopt the two thousand and twenty five Town of Perth Fire Service Apparatus Review as an as an amendment to the Town of Perth Fire Services Fire Master Plan to be used as a guideline for apparatus planning and replacement as presented in the Report, two thousand and twenty five, Committee of the Whole, ten dash three.
I'm going to call a question on that. All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman. I just want to let people know that I have a family member who's part of the fire department, and I'm still going to vote in favor of this because I really don't feel it's a conflict of interest in this case, as public safety comes first.
Grant, here, Michael, do you want to speak to this issue?
Through the chair, the report's in front of council. Happy to answer any questions, Grant or I, if if anyone has any questions. Thank the mayor.
Counselor Waterfield.
Through the chair to Michael, just a comment. Safety is number one when it comes to all of our citizens. And I want to thank both Michael and Grant for producing a staff report and addressing the Perth Cemetery Board's concerns.
Mayor Brown.
So what we're seeing in the report is that we're saying that the design of M T O is the one that most is the safest. And that's good. But my question is, how will the Cemetery Board be informed of our decision?
Through the chair, we can correspond with the Cemetery Board, but it's not really a council decision. It's the M T O that controls this corridor. And it's something that this council has been advocating for for years, if not decades, to improve the safety at this intersection, filed that Grant's been involved with forever. We can certainly let the Cemetery Board know of this report.
It's sort of a convoluted area.
Counselor McCray.
Thank you very much, Chair. To Michael, in regards to this, the Elmwood Cemetery Board's proposal, in their list of requests, are there any of those things that they are requesting our town can help them with?
Through the chair, I don't recall the entire list of requests, but I think it all hinged around keeping that Dufferin Road open.
Well, there's some mention of snow plowing, and there's a variety of different things, kind of a a list.
Yeah, so we have, as it notes in the report, we have an agreement with our neighbors for for winter maintenance on that section, which will continue.
I just wondered when we respond to them, if we could would be able to highlight the areas that we would be able to. I know there's not a lot because there, like as you said, it's a decision made by M T O, but if there are other areas that we can support them with it, it might be helpful.
Counselor Bird.
Thank you through the chair, to the C A O. I'm aware that this is for information only, and I don't want to belabor it too much, but I just want to come back to your point of saying that ultimately, this is M T O. We have advocated as a council in not just this term of council, but in other terms of council, for this intersection to be improved. And at the end of the day, would I be right in thinking that due to engineering and safety concerns, if that intersection is expanded and grows, there would be regulations prohibiting another road being on top of that intersection, which would effectively be what was happening with Dufferin Street?
Through the chair, that would be a correct assumption. That's why M T O has chosen this path because of the the short distances between the the two or between Dufferin Road and the intersection of Highway seven, especially as the highway gets wide into five lanes.
Any further questions? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Oh, so sorry, Gary. Can you read the motion?
As recommended by the Committee of the Whole, be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth received for information the staff review of the Elmwood Cemetery Board's proposal regarding proposed changes to Highway seven and Dufferin Road as presented in Report, two thousand and twenty five, Cow, ten point four.
Questions? Deputy Mayor.
Just like to be on the record that when I met with the M O T M T O guys, I told them I'm really nervous and concerned about this plan. Even though there's going to be a turning lane off Highway seven, you can't tell me the cars are coming sixty kilometers an hour in that zone. They're coming eighty or faster. Nobody slows down coming into Perth. And despite their comments, there's lots of room to stack cars up and let make a safe turn. I would think the predominant people who go to funerals are elderly people in the processions. And I am hoping one day that becomes a formal intersection if we're lucky down the road, but for now. But for now, I just want my concerns on the record because I, I I realize that we have, they have to do this or there's their plan to do it, but I don't agree with it at the current time.
I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Unanimous? Eight point five Daru Farm Project Plan. Kathy, do you want to say something about this? I'll bet you do.
She does.
Through the chair, thank you. How did you know that? I'm pleased today to bring this report to council for the review and hopeful approval of the Daru Farm Project Plan. This Drew Farm Working Group came to fruition after council support to put a 1.3 acre dog park at that location, but also ensuring that we bring forward a working group who can help kind of envision the future for this space and what it can look like. And part of the mandate has to do identifying needs within the community, but creating a sustainable, affordable outdoor recreation area. So we have a couple of members who are here tonight, our Chair John Fennick for the committee. Marlene Springer is here as well. Angela Cullum is also a public member. And then we had Counselor McCray on and Counselor Byrd as well, supporting the initiative. So over the past year and a half, year over year, we've gotten together to discuss kind of options and the layout of the, of the land and, and what we can do with, within the, within the space itself of the 50 acre area of property. And the group really wanted to ensure that we got some public input. So we did an initiative, talked to some interest groups, but also put it out to the community and, and asking them what they want. And we were really pleased because we got the most survey responses that we have ever gotten in our recent knowledge of history of getting feedback and engagement. So we had 300 responses with feedback on that. And so we took that information and it's fun to play with the data. And we looked at it and put this, put this plan together in terms of what we want to kind of see from an outdoor recreation complex. So if, Michael, I don't know if you can click on the, on the report, please, and you go down to the plan. So we looked at 2025 to 2029 in the fact that we felt like it was bite sized actionable chunks that we could take from this plan itself. And if you keep going down, this is the introduction, what, what I just spoke about. And our vision and our community engagement and collaboration. I, I could skip the financial framework quickly, but I don't think council would be interested in that. But we do see that currently with the annual operating costs of we see now would be about an $11,000 investment annually for operations. Because council's already approved that concept in terms of what do we need to maintain and sustain the dog park? And the facility, including just clearing of snow and, and grass cutting and garbage removal and general maintenance and upkeep. So it's great. You have a park, right? But then that's an additional asset that we have for the community. So that's our annual operating costs that we'll bring forward for budget for 2026. We can make it work for the rest of this year. And then we looked at budgeting five year increments with opportunities, looking beyond just, you know, how do we, how do we integrate it into our capital reserves or how do we look at operational costs? We want to make sure that we take any initiative that we bring from the Daru Farm and look at how can we do community sponsorships, volunteer partnerships and grant opportunities tied to accessibility, recreation and green spaces. So our long-term outcomes and the working group agreed on these terms is that by 2023, Daru Farm will be a natural recreation hub balancing trails, gardens and open space. A place for community connection, a sustainable, low impact park that respects the property's character and a model for phase development blending town investment with community leadership. So if we go down to the next page, that's your project plan. This is proposed, we call it a plan, right? Plans are always going to change. But we wanted to have some kind of framework so that every year we have something to work toward. So if we wanted to do trail connections to the Northwest property, so that's actually going in behind Top Shelf Distillery, for instance. That would become a natural network, a trail network within town, but also allows residents and community members to be able to utilize that as another avenue for getting to the space. So we would have to have discussions internally, how do we make that work? And how do we maintain that and bring it forward to council for consideration? There's other things that I think are easy wins, but at the same times it helps, at the same time it helps progress just the natural phases of these, of these components to the project plan. Long-term, we did do outreach to the table and saying for the south end of the piece of property, I think of it in three chunks. The middle chunk is the dog park, just to kind of give you context. The lower chunk, the southern part, we talked about, can we use it for a community garden space? And the table said, while we'd love to, right now, we just don't have capacity because we're maintaining Last Duel Park. They're expanding or they have expanded that garden space, which is great. And they also have Dane's Place and the one just off Rogers Road as well. So currently they don't have capacity, but that doesn't mean in the long term, we can't look at opportunities for that. That being said, we do have the 13,000 trees that were planted this past year. So that really aligns with this vision for the Daru Farm Working Group and these other phased approaches for it. So I think that's it. What I do is just take any questions if council has any question.
Counselor Bolt.
Thank you, Chair. Kathy, I just wanted to say that I, I think you're, you're spot on with, with your short-term development, that being like five years down the road. And I, I'm happy to see that, that for financial considerations, just as you've already stated, that, you know, we're, we're going to look at potential costing, future budgets with opportunities for grant funding, sponsorships and partnerships. I think this is a community property that's by and for the community. Anytime we can include, or I'm sorry, increase green space in our community is a win-win. And there's so many potentials for out there. So I want to thank your committee for bringing forward this proposal. And, and of course, I, I support it in every way. And as I, as I've already said, let's look at many different ways to help fund this as we develop it going forward. Thank you.
If I can, sorry, through the chair, if I can add to that, I think that's, that's thanks for that support. And I think one great example of that is the dog park volunteers. They want to create a friends of the Perth Dog Park Group so that they can have annual membership fees. That would help for the sustainability and maintenance of that park and that space. So I think that's a really great win-win. So thank you.
Great. Counselor, Mayor Brown. Then Counselor Byrd.
Yes, I wanted to congratulate both staff and the, the committee. This is something that got off to a bit of a rocky start, but the end result is great. The question I have, you said in your report, it would cost $11,000 either to operate it. I just wondered that the 60,000 that was raised, you know, partly from the, the group and partly from council. Was that, has that mostly been used already?
Through the chair, yes. So it's been used, we tendered the project plan for the fencing as well as just extra work in terms of just clearing, we had to get a tree down, for instance. So it was actually just preparing the site and getting it to where it is, as well as we purchased a few benches and a bear proof garbage receptacle and, and items like that to get the, the park and signage to a state. That's, that's about that cost.
Okay.
Counselor Byrd.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just want to follow up on the theme that Counselor Bolt was using there about green space and the need for it. That's going to be increasingly so. I mean, the, we're, we're targeting 2030 to have a lot of this in place and, and and to its, so to say optimum. But it goes beyond that because as we move through changing times and, and the, the community is forced to change with higher density, there's going to be a higher demand for green space. And I, I, I think this is a move in the right direction, but then again, I'm part of the choir and I'm singing, so.
Counselor McCray.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that this is one of those projects that, you know, kind of started out small and then the community rallied around it. You know, the dog park group, of, of course, they kind of, well, they did take a, a real lead. They really bought into this project, that's for sure, with all of their fundraising. But I think also the response that we received from the community in the survey, you know, that says a lot about the interest in this project and the importance of green space. But also the outcomes that Kathy, if you can just go back to those on the slideshow here, the outcomes, the long-term outcomes, just so you know, those were in line with those that came in from the survey. It was interesting, the group, those were the types of things our group was talking about. And it was very much in line with what the community was wanting. They wanted a natural recreational hub balanced area with trails and gardens and open space. And so they, it matched up perfectly. The other thing is just with the four phases, any one of, I know this has already been said, but I just want to express this. Any one of those phases, and I think they all should involve community sponsorship, volunteer partnerships, and any opportunity for federal grants or provincial grants and those types of things. We have to really, really hone in on those opportunities as we move forward with the development of any green space in our community. So again, I just want to thank Kathy for all the hard work that she did on this project. Thank you.
Counselor Waterfield.
Through the chair to Kathy, I, I concur with everything that every one of my fellow counselors has stated. And I need to add my voice to the chorus. I want to thank the committee for the absolutely outstanding work. The vision that went into what could have been a very small assignment turned out to be visionary. Working in partnership with citizens, with their, taking into consideration their input. The partnership of, of Tanya and Tracy in particular, that have worked so hard the past number of years. This is a win-win all the way around and we're all very, very proud of this and we can't wait for the opening. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions? Counselor Bolt, would you reach, read the motion?
I'd be pleased to. Moved by, moved by myself as recommended by the committee of the whole, be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth pass, one, passed by law number 52 XX being a by law to adopt the Daru Farm Project Plan for 25, 2025 to 2029 and two, direct staff to prepare a five-year implementation plan for subsequent phases of the Daru Farm Project Plan as presented in report 2025 Cow dash 10.5.
Any further comments? We'll call a question. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Kathy. On to eight point six. Ed, do you want to say anything about this?
Sure.
So on May 1st, 2025 this year, the strong mayor powers came into effect, which also applied to the town of Perth. So this is just a couple of the policies that we're bringing forward to incorporate those amendments. And there'll be future reports with other policies coming forward in the future.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to read the motion?
I'll move the motion. As recommend, moved by myself, as recommended by committee, the whole be resolved that the council of the town of Perth, number one, passed by law number 4754 dash two, being a by law to amend the code of conduct for members of council committees, advisory panels, task forces and local boards and number two, passed by law number 4759 dash one, being a by law to amend the council staff relations policy to incorporate strong mayor's powers provisions as presented in Cal Report 2025 10.6.
Counselor Waterfield.
Through the chair to our clerk, just to clarify, it's my understanding that as per the strong mayor powers legislation, we really have no choice but to pass this. This is really housekeeping pertaining to the actual provincial legislation that we need to update. Is that correct?
Yes. So the strong mayor powers are legislated and we cannot refuse them. And so staff are taking an approach of where we're trying to incorporate that specific legislation into our existing policies where applicable, just as we would with any other legislation. Just, it's just more transparent and for that sake.
Thank you.
Ed already read it. He did, didn't he? Counselor Byrd.
Thank you. Through the chair, and this is not necessarily a question or it's just an observation to get on the record for the, the community that this council repudiated this legislation. But as has been stated, it exists as provincial legislation and, but we are repudiating it.
Madam Brown, Madam Mayor.
So the way to make sure I've got it right, so this is a by law, the strong mayor powers. I, if I, two counselors agreed, could veto this? Yes, no?
I think in this instance, the veto power wouldn't apply necessarily because it's not for the purposes of advancing a provincial priority.
Yeah, yeah, but with another by law.
Right. So in this case, it's just a friendly amendment to the existing policies, just to make mention of the, the new policies that apply to the town to incorporate those into our policies.
But if there's another by law that council passes, I have to sign and say that I chose not to exercise my strong mayor powers.
Yeah. So we can review those on a case by case basis and it's even very difficult to provide. You know, in a lot of cases, it's really scenario based, but we can definitely go through those. You know, when, when, when something comes up, we can go through those and, and review the legislation for, for process and procedure.
So one thing that I noticed, we've been told for years that if somebody, if we thought somebody had a conflict of interest, then that's, that's their business. You don't say anything. But this is a change with the, with the new by law that you can advise somebody if you think that they are, are doing something that's a pecuniary interest. Yes, I got that one right.
So I think the advice that can be provided related to whether a member has a pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest. It still remains that no other member or staff should be advising the member. But they do have a mechanism in place to contact the integrity commissioner through the code of conduct to validate and receive advice from the integrity commissioner on that basis.
Thank you.
Counselor Waterfield.
Chair, I just wanted to make a comment in the context of what Counselor Byrd just stated. I will be reluctantly voting in favor of this motion.
Any other questions? The deputy mayor has already read the motion, so I will call all those in favor. It's unanimous. Nine point one, Director Departmental Updates. Does anyone have any questions for any of the directors? Deputy Mayor.
Just a comment and then a couple of questions for Grant. On the weekend, Grant, I had a, an older couple, I would call them in the town of Perth come up to me and say that they normally walk through Perth on their daily walk, which includes the toll path and through Last Duel Park. And they realized the road was under construction and closed off. They walked across the bridge and a couple of Taggart guys grabbed their shovels and threw down some gravel and said, here, we're going to make this path walkable for you. And, and they just wanted to let the public know, hats off to Taggart and, and Grant to let you know that one. I had a question from a person who didn't really understand how our recycling is working now. But the question was, what happens if they need a new yellow bin or blue bin? If there's breaks because it's, we're not responsible for it anymore.
Short answer through the, the chair is it's all online and it's directly through the province or the contractor. All the information there, it's a 1-800 number or an email address, send it directly to them. them. Now, I understand there is a delay just because they're spooling up, but it's, the program is to drop off those containers at the doorstops for people.
Okay. And the final question was, with our green bin pickup, do we, does the truck go into parking lots of apartment buildings? Like, you know, it's easy for the the green bins up at the curb side of residential, but does it go into the parking lots of of apartment buildings? One lady was concerned that she heard that they'd have to take their bins out to the road, the trucks won't go in anymore.
Right, through the chair, our program is a curbside program. I can't 100% guarantee if, based on the driver or somebody on the back that might walk in or pick up, but it is a curbside program, so nothing's changed on that front.
Okay, so do most apartment buildings have a big green bin that people can drop their stuff in, or do they have individual green bins like a home has?
Through the chair, it's it's generally an individual process. Not a lot of larger residential have a superintendent that's able to wield the containers. So the individual property tenants take upon themselves to have their own bin and they bring it to the curb.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Brown.
Which was for Trevor, but maybe see if you can answer, there was a spot in his report where he said one of the things they did was like medical assist or something like that. Now, our firefighters aren't first responders. Would that have been a case where they happened to be first on the scene or?
Through the chair, I'm not sure of that exact situation, but our firefighters are trained to a certain level for for state and emergency response. So if they are first on scene, they'll do the initial care and medical response until the paramedics or EMS arrives.
Yeah, so there's nothing to say that they can't. It's just that it's a matter of course, they don't.
Yeah, it's, again, through the chair, it's more common in a rural area where the fire department is often there before the paramedics, just because of the proximity. So it doesn't happen as often in Perth, in Perth, but it does happen.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Councillor Waterfield.
Through the chair, Grant, while you were sitting there, I've had a few citizens in the past 10 days ask me, what is the latest estimated time as to the completion of Craig Street? So as of today, what do you think?
Through the chair, everything's, everything's online for the end of October for paving and curb. So the the underground component is near completion. There's work just finishing up on Craig Street towards Drummond. They're also doing a road closure towards the end of this week, Becca Street to tie in. And that'll be the bulk of the underground work. Once you see the concrete curbs and sidewalk in, that's when really start to make more advancement, because then you pick up the paving and the landscaping.
Councillor McCrae.
To you, Chair. Could Joanna come up now and talk about Development Services update? I'm most interested in the last page of your slide presentation, if we could pull that up.
That would help me.
Me too. Right there, that's the one. So in reading that, from January to July 2025, basically, there's been 101 applications go across your desk.
Building department desk.
Yes.
Yep.
That permit's issued 76. This this next figure, Ian Lee to explain to me, work value to date, 30 million 713,937. Explain that to me.
So every project that comes in, every building application that comes in requires a work value on it. It's not the money we collect, that's permit fees, but work value. And so each project is required to have one, and that's the to date tolls, or that should say January till end of August. But that's the value of the projects being done in Perth. So in Perth, in those, between those times, we've had $30 million worth of work value completed.
To me, that would be a really important information to give to the public.
It is being given to.
No, I'm just, no, I'm just saying, that's why I pulled it up. Like, you know, in in that newspaper that we're talking about in the loop, because I don't think a lot of people realize the amount of work and the work value that's being done here in the town of Perth. You know, because it's, some of it's slow in progressing, you know, it's at different stages in the queue. And total fees to date, that's permit?
That's permit fees, yeah.
Okay, and how is that in comparison to last year?
I would have to get back to.
I just wonder.
I I know that we are significantly up from where we were last year. I know we were in the red and we've done some fee upgrades. And so we're, we're coming up to being, I believe we're at the level where we're now sustainable for the amount of staff that we have in the building department, which is where we want to be.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted. I was, I didn't know where that work value to date came from, so thank you very much.
Councillor Bird.
Yes, thank you through the chair. I know that the nature of your work is that so much stuff, especially with the accelerating development, is almost dealt with individually or piecemeal. But if someone wanted, for the sake of something to do, but look at particularly the list you gave us, or just recently, of current status of what's on the books and being developed, wanted to get a rough estimation of what that means population wise increase, what would be a reasonable number to do per unit? Would it be 1.5 people, 1.2 people? Just just to get a ballpark figure of how close we are coming to the limit of our water and the life of our waste management plan.
Yeah, based on stats, can, I remember, brother, I've seen anywhere between 1.5 and 2, let's say 2.3.
Okay.
So if you just went 2, I think that's a fair assessment.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So following up on that, can you extrapolate, like, the beginning of this year, we were in an increase in population of 700 people. Can you extrapolate from the number of the households times 2, how much of an increase in population we would have had?
I'll stand immediately, but look at, like, for example, Perthmore subdivision, we're not quite.
Is that on? Sorry, I wasn't talking with my mic. Like Perthmore Development, for example, we're not quite there, but we're getting there. When that happens, 94 units times 2, we have a multiple apartment units. So I mean, one is 63 units, we have a lot of 18, 25, you know, 30 unit ones going on. We have a big block that came to you guys early in, no, sorry, fall of '23, maybe, that was about 105 units. So I'm not a math person without a calculator, but it's significant. Like, it's 600 plus, I would certainly say.
Right, so Mr. DeCary plans on doing 80 houses in the first go round?
Well, he doesn't have any phases as of yet. It's just that the subdivision, the draft plan of subdivision is for 94 units. And he has not provided any phasing, so I'm I'm going to assume that it's, he'll just, you know, go at his own pace, but there's no phasing, so 94 units.
No further questions? The next meeting date is Tuesday, September 16th at 5:30. Councillor Gary Waterfield will be the chair. And Tuesday, October 7th, 2025 at 5:30, councillor Gary Waterfield chair again. I would ask, are there any questions from the media?
None from me, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, Olivia with Inside Ottawa Valley. I just wanted to clarify with the new animal services bylaw. So now, is it now passed by the town and residents can now contact Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement, like, starting now?
Through the chair, Olivia, no, not yet, not until the council meeting on two weeks from today.
And so for the services that Frontenac will be providing, I just want to clarify, is that just for found dogs or is that also for other animals like cats and things like that?
Residents can still call for other animals. We don't pick up cats and bring them to the pound. We would just deal with if we can find the the cat's owner or cat's home. But any kind of animal control issue.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you, Olivia. Under number 13, there is no scheduled closed closed session tonight. There is no rise in report from the closed session. I would call on councillor Bolt for the adjournment.
Certainly, moved by myself, committee of the whole being held on September the 9th, 2025, adjourned at 7:07 AM.